Introductions, okay, so I'm Stuart McIntosh, I'll be chairing tonight. I'm joined by Mary Ellen Carpenter, Charlie Law, the foreign Greg Jackno, Janie Regan, and John Brown. And we've got Paul Taft Superintendent in front, as well as Christina Batista, who is the Administrator to both the Planning and Zoning Board. So approval of variances requires a majority vote, and so tonight we'll have five members voting, therefore you will need, you know, three members supporting your variance. So let's get started, and if you could just introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Erica Ellenberger. I'm an architect for the Minns at 3 Leonard Road. I'm here tonight with landscape designer Jennifer Colao, who's also assisting the Minns on this project. Just to walk you through the project, I prepared a statement of principal points, looking to walk through the various concerns that one may have regarding to a variance and to kind of give you understandings of our appeal for this case. If we could start with the site plan, that would be terrific. The property at 3 Leonard Road designated on the tax assessment map, the Village of Bronxville, Section 23, Block 3, Lot 3, consists of 20,700 square feet, or .47 acres. It's located on the west side of Leonard Road, midway between intersecting streets Avon Road and Hughes Place. It's in the residence AA District of the village, and is improved with a one-family residence, which is currently home to owner G. Minn. Our project proposes a new bluestone terrace with outdoor kitchen. If we look over, swipe over a little bit to the right, it shows the proposed there, here. A new bluestone terrace with outdoor kitchen, fire pit, and stair to grade. The proposed building coverage of 26.1 exceeds the allowable of 22.5 percent. The owner seeks a variance from Section 310-9E maximum building coverage for 3.6 percent coverage over the allowable. I respectfully request that the board in making their determination considers the benefit to the owners as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and community if the variance is granted. As to the requested variance, we respectfully submit the following. The grant of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor a detrimental effect on the neighboring properties. The proposed bluestone and stone materials will match the existing stone foundation and bluestone surfaces on-site, allowing the terrace to blend into the existing palette. If we could possibly skip ahead to the sixth page, the last colored rendering, to just give a visual, those are some existing photos, and one additional scroll. Here again is the proposed terrace here, to blend in with the existing stonework. In addition, the owner is working with a landscape designer to create beds for new plantings, which will enhance the visual appeal of the property for neighbors. Furthermore, the proposed terrace will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the terrace structure is located in the rear yard of the property, not visible from Leonard Road, maintaining the original street scape. Second point we wish to discuss, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any feasible method other than the requested area variance. In building the terrace, it is the owner's intent to be able to fully utilize an outdoor portion of the property that is currently difficult to access from the residence and has a sloping terrain, as seen in these pictures here, which makes it challenging to occupy and enjoy. The new terrace would provide an expanded outdoor living space outside the lower level of the home, without having to encounter several steps to grade. Two, uh, three, item three, the requested variance is not substantial. The proposed area variance is not substantial, in that the terrace only exceeds the allowable building coverage by 3.6 percent. Unlike a covered structure such as a house, our proposed building coverage will have an open airspace that will not add a sense of obstruction, of an obstruction volume to the property. Additionally, with the inclusion of the proposed terrace, the lot's open space would be 70.1 percent, which would be 15 percent over the required minimum of 55 percent. This is an indicator that we are not overbuilding the site with impervious surfaces. Item four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impacts on either the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The requested variance will not have, rather, the construction of the terrace will allow the owners to control and manage stormwater that currently falls on the existing rock ledge, and follows contours downhill to neighboring properties. Terrace drains will collect and direct rainwater to a drywall on the property. Additionally, the siding of the terrace was designed to respond to an existing mature oak tree adjacent to the house, providing a radius canopy of clearance to the trunk. It's our desire to maintain the natural features, which are, you know, make the site lovely while enhancing some of the harder-to-area areas that are to plant. Number five, the necessity for the proposed variance is not self-created. The variance is not self-created, as the current need to socialize outdoors is now an even more facet of everyday living, you know, and as we experience different challenges with the topography of the site, we feel that this is less of a self-created issue and more of dealing with the property's natural features. In conclusion, we respectfully submit that the benefits of the owners outweigh any potential detriment to the community. We appreciate your consideration, and request that the zoning board grant the requested area variance.
So I, one question I have is, in your application, it references, it says silt fence and hay baling. What is that?
So whenever we have, and I'll just highlight it here around the property, whenever we have any type of excavation, we want to provide a barrier whereby we're not allowing any of this disturbed material begin to erode and redirect silt, or any of that, or any dirt or debris down to our neighbors. So it's, you know, digging a drywall, excavating for a patio, anytime we're disturbing the earth, we're going to want to, you know, we're coming from a high place to a low place, so we're going to want to try to capture and contain all that. That goes hand-in-hand with our drywall measures to retain that water. And it's a temporary feature only during construction.
Just during construction, okay.
I have a quick question. I can see, I think it's great you're going to keep the big oak tree, this looks really great, you planned all around that. Are there any trees that have to be taken down, or is it, I can't see from the landscaping really well.
No, there's a real, you could tell there's lots of, from the existing photos, I think it's number five, and that if we scroll down more, there are lots of bushes and shrubs that are really not, are leggy and not doing well. The intent is to really plant all of this area here with, I think, you know, over 100 perennials?
Hundreds on the hillside, and a combination of shrubbed and grans all around the new terrace wall, so that the wall won't stand out a lot in the backyard, so anyone looking up from the bottom would have more of a, just these pieces of the wall or the shrubbery. But on the left side of the rock, where there's some existing sort of, let's call it maybe volunteer plantings, that are planted themselves, we're going to revamp that whole area with a lot of water-absorbing perennials, so that the raining water will not only be caught below by the stormwater management, but also the perennials will absorb a lot of that amount of that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
It's also the intent, hand-in-hand with the design, there's an existing stone wall that is in this area here, which if we might scroll up to the existing photos, I could show you, it kind of has an obtrusive nature to it. It's this wall here, against the building, as we're coming down from the side yard to our new terrace area, and this wall is going to be opened up with a railing, and we're just trying to have everything be less of kind of a, you know, really heaviness of the stone, have a nice beautiful light rail, really ease into the property and feel less, you know, less of this really heavy stonework. This is an existing railing, and stonework on a patio in the back here, we're trying to emulate this type of stonework, and have the same railing detail carry through in this area, and then also around the new patio.
Other questions? Is there anyone, I don't see anyone from the public that has any questions or comments? Oop, in the back, and can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Debbie Steg, and I'm representing 88 Sagamore Road. We're just downhill from that property, and we had looked over the plans, we had just received them, I guess the notice last week, and it calls for lighting in the backyard as well, so we're wondering how extensive that lighting is, and how much is going to spill over onto our property since our patio is in the back, and, you know, there have been a lot of parties up in that area, all those houses up there in the past, that's been a problem, especially in the summertime in the past.
I think if we scroll, go back up, sorry. Right there, we have an electrical plan. The majority of our lighting here, and I just, my, the government's going to resume, and I'm just going to peek at my, here's what I did. So we're proposing recessed wall lighting to provide a really nice man-made glow, all within the stone wall area here. Step lights coming up, guiding one around the path. We have a barbecue, we're had fixture kind of a little painting, and as far as proposed whole, you know, lights that, you know, that would be most possibly noticeable is this fixture here, have a tree-mounted downlight, and that's to, you know, provide a little spillover of light to generally light this area, and also accent, you know, some of the plantings, and kind of build some drama with the, you know, the tree. That's what we're proposing, you know, for the lighting. We're not looking to add spots, you know, along the, along the high, along the high points back here.
I would just say that we're going to add, the lighting is primarily, like, incorporated, and it's not, or, 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 or,[936.44]
redo that whole wall and it was buckled. So I'm wondering, you know, you've mentioned that you're going to do some of that, you know, building while you're doing the building, and I guess you're doing something, what we would request is that whatever the water is coming doesn't come straight down to us, because there's another way to retaining wall and on a patio, and we don't want that one to buckle either, like the front yard did.
Sure. Yes, the intent is that all the water that originally was hitting all of this, you know, maybe going down a little bit of layer of soil that was hitting this rock, now we're, and it was kind of trickling down, you know, down towards your property, now we're providing drainage within, within this surface itself. So we have drains here, here, I think here and here, from just looking at this, where we're collecting all of this surface water that otherwise was hitting the rock and, you know, kind of percolating this way, and it's being contained in a drywall, which is basically a storage container that's going to hold onto that water. It's surrounded by gravel, and whenever the soil is, you know, if you have a big major storm and, you know, it's really saturated, it's really holding onto that water volume until the landscape can recede it. So we're going to be making an improvement. We're definitely going to have protection during the process, so we're not going to have, you know, any flow your way. We'll have that barrier during construction. So I think if anything, we'll hopefully see improvements in this area.
Sounds like it to me.
You're saying there's going to be containment area, and it's going to completely contain it, but we get summer storms where it spills over, so the question is, if there is a spillover, you're estimating that there will be a containment, but there have been plenty of times where there's been spillover. Where will that spillover go? Which direction is it planning if it spills over? Because it can't be 100 percent contain, I mean, how deep are you going to, you know?
Yeah, so the design of the drywall relates directly to the sizing of this patio space. So it's a direct formula based on a flood event of a certain amount of time. So I could provide a note here, I think it's this one, that just says, upon approval, I'm going to have my drywall engineer just, I do my own calculations, I'm going to have my drywall engineer just verify that our surface area to drywall ratio is appropriate. And as it is now, I'm oversized, but I'll have him confirm that if this is, if this has to be two drywells, he'll tell me. If he's planning for, you know, I'm personally, we change a lot of workspace conditions, but we're trying to plan for workspace conditions with the drywall.
So the question is, if it does overflow, which direction is the overflow going to go? According to the design? Because there's a probability, you know, if it tops, is it going to spread out, or is it going to come down?
Well, if this, if there was a failure of the drywall, I mean, and I suppose you would have, you know, which I wouldn't expect, because that's, you know, anything crazy, you know.
Well, because we've had a couple of walls on Sagamore in that very area go down over the last few storms. Our retaining wall, the wall across the street that the village had to fix, so there is, that particular area is rather sensitive.
Maybe I can help you here.
Yeah, I mean, the question, I think, for us is, is this project going to exacerbate that situation? Or is it going to make it better?
Well, and that's the question we have. We certainly, you know, have looked at the plan, and it seems to be a beautification of it. The only question is, is it going to create more wall problems where we've had to replace our walls a number of times already?
Right.
Because of other improvements from neighboring properties.
If it's likely to be the same or better, then that really doesn't enter into our calculations. If it's going to be worse than it would, at least in my mind.
And that's the question, because we've had a number of storms that have impacted that very area, is, you know, you can see that, you know, there have been a couple of walls replaced in that very zone.
Greg, you have something?
Yeah, so I have Coltech 180s, I think, drywells installed, and they held up just fine during IDA. It was actually the street that did the damage to my house. So like, when they were getting installed, the landscaper said it's like, it'll take care of the once-in-a-hundred-year storms, and that was one of those storms.
Which seemed to happen.
Yeah, I was really worried about it, because I wasn't at the house at the time, but there was no overflow coming through my gutter down in the ground, so like, it actually held all the water, surprisingly.
But at this, at this property, there's not currently a drywall, is that correct? So that, if there's no drywall and you're putting one in, in theory, that should only help you. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
That's a massive improvement, yeah.
Paul, do you want to add something?
Where would it go?
Yeah.
Expected to go, if.
Paul Taft, Building Inspector. I think what Eric is trying to explain, that these drywalls are designed to a 25-year storm rate. And then you're speaking about the overflow, or, you know, just overage. I think that possibly maybe you can design some sort of overflow on that system, where maybe there's a little riprap or some rock that could help disperse that. What people need to understand is these systems are designed for a certain rainfall rate, but when we have rainfall rates that are quadruple of that, these systems are not designed to handle that. And that's what we've seen in recent times, and it's not pleasant for anybody. So I think that they are improving, you know, an area that has no drainage, and they're putting something in. And I think you have a valid question in that, you know, and I would, I would view it as a professional, you know, inspector, is this should have an overflow, and how is that handled? Maybe we can handle it as opposed to just a pop-up emitter. And, you know, if you, you know, I think that you still need to check and do some perk tests and whatnot, right?
That's where, so we would, my engineer coming, we have the kit built, and then we had a perk test. We're using initial sizing.
Right.
Based off of standard Bronxville soil conditions, but very simply, if it's, you know, one drywall or two, we'll happily have a part of the project.
Yeah.
Where if we have a volume of 400 or X, and, you know, and it makes sense, you know, if our capacity is 450, maybe it makes sense to do two. I think that's, you know, you tend, you know, being conservative approach is something that makes sense.
Right. All of us, all of us want to understand there, a little extra capacity is the way to go, just for your own property.
Paul, can I just, a question for you. So what's the process here? They bring in their experts, and how does the village, or you get involved?
I would review their submission. They'll do the calculations, they'll show where they did perk tests. And a perk test is basically, they'll dig a hole, maybe a six-inch hole, and they'll pour, whether it be a gallon of water or a certain distance of water, and they measure or monitor how quickly that water goes in, recedes into the ground. And then they base those results, that's how they size the system. You know, our process is that if you're increasing impervious area, then you need to handle that runoff on-site. So that's sort of how we got to, you need to do this. We base it on the 25-year storm still, which is probably a little conservative, but, you know, it's something that the village has to, you know, decide on changing that. That's based on county recommendations. And then, so, you know, once we do that, then they'll decide how many Coltech units that you need, and then, you know, design a system. I'll review it. Most of them are fairly basic, you know, I would have the option of having an engineer review it, but I, you know, up to this point, I really haven't had to do that. All right?
Well, but, so Paul, I guess the question is, I mean, this is already part of the process, so we don't have to add this requirement, correct?
Part of my requirements.
Part of what you would do.
You would do this in any event?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And really, I mean, really, the things that, you're not going to see the Coltech, so it's really more the number of them according to an engineer. You have the drains that are in the patio, that, you know, you could comment on those if you didn't like the way they looked. You don't really see those, so that's not an issue. I think probably the most pertinent thing for you to consider is this, the pop-up emitter or the overflow. So, you know, you'd have your Coltechs in the ground, and typically you would put it overflow, so that if that fills up, that water would come shooting out, and, you know, maybe you can speak to, you know, a creative way to sort of disperse the water, so it's not just coming out of a tube running down at this poor woman's house. And I think that's fairly simple, typically done, and, you know, and that's effective. You know, basically, the whole premise of storm, treating stormwater is to slow it down. So, you know, putting it in the ground, you're slowing it down, and we, you know, we can assume we're going to have more storms like we've had, so we'll have overflow, and if we can treat that in a way that best handles it, I think, I can't think of any other way to...
So Paul, just to be clear, this question of overflow, is this something that you, when you review the plan, will require or may require?
Yes, yeah, I would, I would in this situation. Again, it's probably not something you'll necessarily see. I think the important part is that it's effective, really.
Okay.
Is it required?
I would require it in this situation.
Okay.
Sometimes, you know, if it's a flat piece of property, and it's like, okay, it's going to, you know, have an overflow, but it's not a detriment to other neighbors, then it might just be a pop-up. You know, it's basically a little cover, and when water comes up, it pops up and water disperses normally. And again, it's either to show that it's failing, or that, you know, you're just getting way more water than it's designed for, but it's a good fail-safe for you.
Okay.
All right?
Good. Okay, so let me propose a resolution that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Bronxville grant the residents of Three Leonard Road a variance from Section 310-9E. Maximum building coverage allowed is 22.5 percent. Proposed building coverage is 26.1 percent. Requested variance of 3.6 percent. Let me start with you, John Brown. Your thoughts?
Yes, I think the improvements are an enhancement to property. I don't see any detriment, and I'm in favor of the variance.
Good, thank you. Janey?
I also agree. I think it looks great. I think you did a lot of your work, our work for us. You went through all those stipulations that we always think about, and the benefit outweighs the detriment, and, yeah, it's not self-created, and it's not substantial, so I'm in favor of it as well.
Charlie?
I believe that four of the five considerations at least were met. I also believe that the two concerns of the neighbor, certainly the lighting, I believe is going to be appropriate and subtle and all of that. It sounds like, I hope it will, and I expect that the water issue will be addressed. So in that, in that case, I would vote for the variance, yes.
All right. Mary Ellen?
I agree with my colleagues. I think it visually is a vast improvement, and dealing with water, I have dealt with it in my own yard. If you can do it successfully, it should help everyone. So I approve.
All right, thank you. And I also agree with my colleagues, so therefore the variance is granted.